Being that it is 5:30 on May 6th and we have a quorum present, I am opening this committee of the whole meeting. We will start with roll call due to WebEx and in-person, so we are transparent about who's all joining us. Thank you.
Here.
Michael Martins?
Here.
Tom Killian?
Here.
Tom Neal?
Here.
Jim Wadiski?
Here.
Becky McAlini?
Here.
Lisa Rasmussen?
Yes, I'm here.
Sarah Watson?
Here.
Don Herbst?
Yes.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Lou Larson?
Here.
Deb Ryan?
Shh.
I see Don.
Alder Herbst, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alder Herbst?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, we have 10 members present. I'm not sure what the other -- I talked to Deb today and she said she was coming. I don't know, she might be running late. But we want to start since we have everyone here. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming on such short notice. I understand that this was called within a week. But due to -- we usually, just to give some background to the new people, what we usually do right when a new term starts is we start a -- it's what we call is a retreat. And what that is, is that we all come in an evening together, join and have a small meal down in the lunchroom downstairs, and we have brief presentations by all the department heads, giving general information, sometimes some ongoing or some updates on ongoing projects that we will be discussing and voting on later in the term. And we then also get together as a group and talk about priorities or what our priorities would be that we would like to address in the coming term. Due to the COVID and all of the restrictions, that just isn't possible. And since the election and everyone being installed, I've talked to the mayor and to others, you know, veteran members, and we discussed what should we do? Should we wait? Should we do -- should we go ahead with something? And it was our feeling that we needed to go ahead and at least do the general presentations, legal overview of what our responsibilities are according to quorums and other open meeting laws, and to get some updates, so when these things come before you, you have an idea. This is agendized as a presentation type only. We are not -- we are a quorum right now, so we cannot go and have extensive discussions into items that are going to be voted on later. The public does not know about that. So what we're going to try to do is just have like a general overview. Please, if you have questions, jot them down. And as I told you in emails previous, you are very welcome and encouraged to contact the department heads and their staff that they may point you to, to get those questions answered. That is what the information that you need. It's just that we're not going to have that discussion here. I'd like to start out with a little something, is that I -- when I accepted this position as president, I kind of said, I made a little speech and I said, you know, things, everything is done. We all decided to join our -- as a council member, because we have a passion for this community and for what it stands for, and we want to bring our community forward. We want to have -- we want to make it better. And there is no one that I have worked with in the last four years that does not have that goal. Now, getting to that goal doesn't mean we all may have the same path, or we may not all decide that the same thing is important to us, and that's okay. I expect everyone to bring their passion. That's okay. That's great. But I do want to remind everybody that I really would like to keep the quorum going and remember that we are representing the city of Wausau, and we're representing all of our residents, and we want to make sure that we treat everybody with respect, if they agree with us or not, and that we listen intently to each other's viewpoints, and you can decide not to agree. That's great. Don't vote the same way that you don't want somebody else. That's great. But I just want to make sure that both staff and other council members are all treated with respect and decorum. So with that, I thought we could, I don't know, where were we going to start? Who -- is there a department head that wants to start? Oh, I see, I have somebody. Mary Ann Groth will start first. Thank you.
I'll be short and sweet. So my department is the Finance Department. We like to call ourselves the Customer Service Department, because we're really a melding of finance and the statutory responsibilities of the City Treasurer and the City Clerk. And so we were this big group of people, and we were trying to figure out, well, what we all had in common, and we realized customer service was what we had in common, and so that's what we like to call ourselves, the Customer Service Department. So we do a wide variety of things in, under the state statutes for the City Clerk responsibilities, and of course, Leslie is the City Clerk. We do elections. We do licensing, like pet licenses, liquor licenses, bartender licenses. We are, or the City Clerk is the official record keeper for the council, so that includes resolutions, contracts, things like that. And we have electronic imaging system that we use to accomplish that responsibility from the treasurer's perspective in the statutes. We are responsible for issuing the tax bills and collecting all of the funds for the city. And that requires us to manage a number of accounts receivable systems. So that would be the municipal court fines, utility billing, taxes, general collections that we do, like the airport hangar leases, any of the leases in the city. We do parking tickets. We issue all of the invoices for monthly parking permits. So there's a wide variety of things. And the customer service staff that sit at the front counter are very knowledgeable about a lot of the rules. They answer phones. They answer questions that the constituents have that are, you know, like, who has the best pizza in town, to why your hot water isn't working, and we have to explain to them, the hot water doesn't come from the water plant, it comes from your hot water heater in your basement. So they get a lot of different telephone calls. We manage all of the accounting for the city, so that includes payroll for the employees, like I said, the utility billing, all of the financial accounting records. We do some, manage some of the insurance policies. We do the financial planning for the tax increment districts and our outstanding debt, investments. We have FTE of 11.84, because we have three part-time customer service people, so they work, some of them work mornings till 12:30, and then some of them come in right before the lunch hour, so that we get some overlap during that lunch hour, and we're able to expand our workforce during heavy work demands, like tax collection and elections. So, oh, we do try to put a lot of documents on our website, on the city's website, under Finance, so you'll find old budgets, financial statements going back to 2006, room tax information, capital projects information. So we really welcome you to, and a lot of information on the tax increment district, so we welcome you to go to that and look. We are all interested in helping you find the information if you need it. You're welcome to come in. I have, you know, some council members who go through the budget book, and then they put little stickies on it, and they come and they sit, and we go through the stickies together. Really, no question is too large or too small, so we, you know, welcome any of those questions. So that's it.
Any questions on WebEx? Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Next. Mr. Lindman?
today. If you just kind of want to follow through, give me a few minutes to go through this. It's a pretty quick overview. Thanks, Leslie.
You're welcome.
Of the Department of Public Works and Utilities, and so we have actually six divisions under the department. And so we have a wide range of classifications in the department, and our employees are housed at four separate locations. Our six different divisions are Engineering, GIS, or the Geographic Information System, Streets and Maintenance, Inspections and Zoning, Parking, and Water and Sewer. Our personnel and budgets, like I said, we have many different job classifications within the department with the different divisions, and so, and we have 101 full-time staff. Majority of those are down at Streets and Water and Sewer. So there's a breakdown in the handout that I provided for you for those. We also, as Mary Ann talked about, down in Finance, they do a lot of our financing, or all the financing actually, for the utility, and the clerical people also assist the utility with scheduling appointments for meter changeouts and taking calls and those types of things for the Water and Sewer. So we're thankful that, you know, they are busy, and at certain times, they do get a lot of phone calls for the utility. Budgets, these are just some typical annual budget costs for you to just kind of see what we operate with on an annual basis. Just kind of going through each of the divisions. So Engineering, we do infrastructure design, planning, development of infrastructure, construction management, administration is really a lot of what we do. Everything from streets to anything within the right-of-way, trails, anything really that's being built or maintained within the city is usually coming out of Engineering, or at least they have their touch in it anyway. So if you have questions on construction projects, if you have questions on what's happening in the city, if you're not quite sure who to call, send me an email or give me a call. Happy to track that down for you at any time. GIS, the Geographic Information System, is the mapping information that we have with the city. It's very extensive. You know, we see the pretty maps and stuff, but behind that, there's a lot of information, whether it's zoning or the types of housing, whether they're rental houses, whether it's a low to moderate income area, the different districts we have, the wards we have. And so if you're curious about areas in your district, you know, and how they're categorized, or what information for zoning, or anything like that, a lot of that information is in GIS, and we can plot those out for you. So just give us a call. We'd be happy to do that and work with you on that. Streets and Maintenance, that's probably your most visible. We're out on the streets all the time with the trucks. They're maintaining the streets, they're cutting curbs, they're digging things, they're snowplowing, they're sweeping, they're collecting leaves in the fall. All that's done down at Streets and managed through them. So if you have any issues with any of that, any stormwater or anything, please let us know. Inspections and zoning, they deal with all of the permits, all of the inspections for new builds, rebuilds, any development that's coming in the city. They also have two property inspectors. Any issues with property maintenance in your districts that you have, typically call inspections or myself will route those complaints. We get those frequently from citizens, whether it's the grass is too tall, whether they have a fence that's falling down, and anything in between. Parking, probably the smallest division, but, you know, parking is a big deal in the city, especially in the downtown. And so it is partnered with Finance. Mary Ann and Finance, they really handle a lot of the agreements with the downtown parking partners that we have. DPW really maintains all of the parking and the infrastructure and those types of things. So we partner with that. And it really is important for us on the parking with the revenue that we take in, so that's a big part to try to keep that maintained. The last division, and I'd separate this out typically with Wausau Water Works, is just because it's funded through an enterprise fund, through user rates, it's not part of the levy, and so it's easy to just kind of separate that out. So there's some typical information that we have for the water and wastewater, the distribution piping, collection piping, our storage facilities, our supply wells that we have on the water side, and the treatment facility that we have. And same thing on the wastewater with our lift stations, and we do take and treat wastewater from the city of Schofield. So they maintain their entire collection system on their own, but their wastewater, it's all collected and it's pumped to the city of Wausau, and we treat it and charge them appropriately for that. So, and we've had agreement with them for a number of decades for that. I welcome any of you, if you're interested in any or all of the facilities, happy to set up tours to walk through them. And the staff is excellent. They'll take you into all the ins and outs, the nooks and crannies of each of the facilities if you're interested. They'll set up ride-alongs for you for snowplowing, and so, street sweeping, whatever you want to do. So anything that interests you, just let us know, and we'll make accommodations and make it happen.
Any questions on that? No.
Thank you.
Hello, Rick.
Hello. I'm Rick Rubel. I'm your city assessor. I'm the department head for the Assessment Department. The Assessment Department has six staff, including myself. I have one commercial appraiser, three of regular property appraisers, and a technician. We control, or value 16,186 parcels. That's how many parcels we have in the city of Wausau. And the 2019 total assessed value was $2.8 billion worth assessed value. We also assess for the city of Schofield with the contract with them, and the city of Schofield has approximately almost 1,100 parcels, and they're at $216 million in value. Everything that the assessor does, or the Assessment Department does, is monitored by the Department of Revenue, and we are controlled by state statute, under Statute 70, and the Property Assessment Manual, case law, and United States, Wisconsin Constitution. Everything in regards to those documents instruct how the assessors is to conduct assessments in the state of Wisconsin. There's a, every, in a non-reval year, we're looking at sales of, that happened in the city of Wausau. We have to validate them for, if they're arms-length or not, and report them to the Department of Revenue. It's these sales that the Department of Revenue also tracks to help, and they do this for every municipality, and they track these for, for the main reason is equalization. That is to find out how well or where your assessments sit, because in one given year, and like for the city of Wausau's case, in 2015, we did a revaluation. Our job at that point was to bring property values to 100% of market value. Now, that's basically the baseline on where properties are, where they stop, other than new construction and things that change in a maintenance year. Myself, or our department, and the Department of Revenue, we also, we track and follow the sales or follow the market that is occurring. And by state law, we are to have our assessments within 100% of market value, and they do allow a 10% leeway. So we can have our assessments at 110% of market value, or 90% of market value. Anything beyond that, then, is a trigger for the Department of Revenue to start watching and saying, hey, you're getting, you're out of compliance with statute, and that you are, should be gearing up to be doing a revaluation and bring property values back to 100%. We are doing that for the 2020 assessment year. So this is the year that we're doing a revaluation of the entire city of Wausau, and also the entire city of Schofield. I guess there's a lot of things that, you know, I can get into. I don't know, I don't want to bore you to death with the assessment process. I mean, I'd be happy to talk with anybody if they want to come in and learn more about assessments. Everything that we do is statute-driven. We track everything. We have about 30 different neighborhoods in the city of Wausau. We follow all the sales that happen within there. It's those sales that happen within each of these neighborhoods that determine the value for those folks that live there. So we trying to compare apples with apples. And, you know, because everything, when somebody buys a property, it's always location, location, location. That's the biggest thing, and that's how we track on valuation in regards to the sales. That happened in the city of Wausau. And we have, you know, maps of those neighborhoods. We have historically where the sales occurred, and what's the dollars per square foot for this neighborhood, what is the average sale price for this neighborhood. We can look at your own neighborhood, what is the average sale price, or what's the average size of the house, what's the average age of the house. We know all that information. It's all data that we collect and analyze every year. So.
So when you revalue, revale this year, do you think our alder people should be expecting phone calls? Do you get complaints? Just trying to prep everyone here.
Sure. Anytime a revaluation, it's an edgy time because of taxes, of course. Everybody feels that if their property value goes up, okay, that they're going to be paying more in taxes. That's not necessarily true. Historically, what has happened when we increased value in the city of Wausau, now we've done, increased in 2004 was a revale year, 2007 was a revale year, 2015 was a revale, and now 2020. Historically, what has happened is that anything that we do as a department, we raise value or we lower value, like we did in 15, we lowered value, the mill rate has the opposite effect of what we do. If budgets stayed the same, you have five taxing identities that levy against the city, against the assessment. Everybody pays on the assessment, they don't pay on the estimated fair market value. And so with the levy, I guess there's lots, we're trying to trade a thought here.
Prolration.
Oh, yeah, the proration. So what happens is, is that if all the five taxing identities, the state of Wisconsin, the technical colleges, the city of Wausau, the Wausau School District, and the state of Wisconsin, if their budget stayed the same, which they'd always never do, but if they stayed the same, it would be an opposite effect. So if I raise the values in the city of Wausau 18%, that mill rate is going to have opposite direction and go down 18%. So what I tell, Marie tell people is if your change of assessment notice is more than the standard or the citywide increase in value, you more than likely would see an increase in your taxes. If it is less than that, you'd probably see a decrease in taxes. So the benchmark is really what are we raising as a community? And what I can say for 2020, we are raising approximately 18%. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Becky, I have one.
Oh, hang on. Hang on. Lisa has a question. Okay.
Sure.
Maybe more of a suggestion. I guess if Rick could just talk for a second, too, about border review and, you know, the timeline and what that process looks like, because so often, we get asked by residents what they should do if they don't agree with their assessment, or if they want to dispute their value. And so when you're outside of border review, they certainly can interact with the department, but there's a set process also if they wish to debate that fact.
Right.
So Rick, could you talk about that a little bit for us?
Sure, sure. Every year stands on its own merit, okay, as far as the assessments go. So anybody can object to their value every single year if they choose. Our statutory lien date is January 1st, so we react to things that, at the close of January 1st is when assessments are closed. Anything that happens after that date, so in other words, a house burns to the ground on January 2nd, come December, they'll get a tax bill as if that house stood the entire year. That's just the way the law is. And so in a revale year, or a non-reval year, we send out a property assessment change notices to all properties that have $100 change. And there, in the notice, it explains what your old assessment was and what your new assessment is. It also explains when the open book timelines. Now typically, in the city, we have a week's worth of open book in a non-reval year, and we have two weeks of open book in a revale year. And this is ample amount of time for folks to, if they have questions about their notice, to contact us, and, you know, if we have a mistake in regards to the assessment record, that's the time to correct it. Also, on that notice, it has a border review date. Now, the border review date is a citizen's, I want to call it a citizen's court. We have five members or citizens of the city of Wausau that listen to oral testimony based on the evidence of why the assessment is incorrect, and the assessor then gives oral testimony on why it is correct. So once those dates or deadlines of the border review meet each year, those assessments are pretty much etched in stone unless there is a palpable error. I added another zero that I, you know, a mistake, something happened on that aspect. So the deadlines are very important. Now typically, in a non-reval year, and historically, the city of Wausau has had border review in the month of June and July, one of those two months. In a revale year, they've been pushed to August, September, you know, because there's a little bit more work that's involved in a revale year. So there's ample amount of time in regards to when the notices go out. In a revale year, there's going to be over 30 days between the notices being mailed out and the first day of the border review, and our open book is going to be right after those notices are mailed, and we're going to be open for two weeks, and plus, we can see folks well, you know, after that. You've got to understand that statutorily, open book is two hours. You know, that's it. You know, so it doesn't mean that within this 30-day window, once open book is over with, that we don't want to talk to anybody. I mean, it's just the official time, you know, and this is the time to get things settled if we need to. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, we have to pause the meeting currently. Ms. Ryan is trying to get on WebEx, and so we need to pause to help her. We will be back as soon as possible. It's been unsuccessful, and if Ms. Ryan can hear me, if we lost you again, this is being recorded. You can go on the WAAM site and watch it there, and it'd be on YouTube, so we want to continue. So on with that. Thank you, Rick, and Mr. Schock is next.
All right. It's my honor to introduce you to the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department. You know, just a quick overview, I'll run through this presentation. There's hard copies that you have. I'll leave hard copies in the mailboxes of those who aren't with us tonight, you know, so they can also see it. Second page, you'll see some of the topics that we try to tackle. Every year, we go through a very extensive goals and mission process as a department with each of the committees that we work with, and you'll see that coming up, so that just highlights some of them. One thing we're really proud of is our department, you know, people who do this type of work, who really, it's a vocation, it's something that likely, you know, they are really called to do. So during our strategic planning session last year, we did this mapping, and each of our employees kind of plotted themselves with these stars on this chart, and you can see, you know, that it really comes through about how much our staff really loves what they do, and obviously does important work for the world as well, you know, tackling a lot of -- a lot of development challenges and things like that. You know, on the next page, on page four, a quick summary of the CDA, that's the Community Development Authority, which is a combination of a redevelopment authority and a housing authority. There's a seven-member Board of Commissioners appointed by the mayor and two alder people. We oversee 149 units of housing in Riverview Towers, which folks recognize as basically public housing, housing for those with disabilities or income restrictions or the elderly and stuff like that. We oversee Riverview Terrace, which is essentially a assisted living facility as well. And we own 46 homes throughout the city in all of your districts that are basically operated as public housing facilities as well. We administer $1.3 million annually in housing choice vouchers. That's often called Section 8. Those are vouchers to private landlords to offset the cost of, of housing costs, rental costs, and to ensure that it's affordable for folks, you know, to, to live in private landlord properties. And the CDA has also tackled a variety of redevelopment projects over the years. There's a long list of, of projects all the way back to things like the Wausau Energy Properties, Marathon Rubber, and things like that that were, you know, kind of infamous problems in the city from an environmental perspective. We're still cleaning up a craft cleaners, a dry cleaner on Second Avenue, and we recently sold 2102 North Second Street, the former Woodworkers Mark to Bridge Clinic for redevelopment, and we bought and are in the process of tearing down the Ponderosa Motel and facilitating that for affordable housing. So on the planning piece, you see lots of recent planned projects have been in the works. A new comprehensive plan was done in 2017. Last year, we overhauled the city's entire zoning ordinance the first time since 1967, so a big, real big project, and worked with inspections to facilitate that. We finished plans around the mall, and there's a variety of different plans. Be glad to send them to you if you're interested in seeing those. Our website, wausadevelopment.com, has all of this stuff on it, so you can, you can see it there as well. We also worked on plans in the north riverfront and the south riverfront area, which is basically the areas north of Bridge Street or south of Washington Street on, on the east side of the river that, you know, that are targeted for redevelopment as well. Our department staffs, the Public Art Commission, which is new, the Sustainability and Energy Commission, which is new, and the Bike-Ped Advisory Committee as well, and coordinates those. And the Rivers Edge Plan has been a big topic, an update since the original plan was done in 1995. And in 2020, we're investing money in further design elements of those kind of key segments for, for the Rivers Edge Trail expansion. Our department works a lot with marketing and, you know, doing press releases for the city, sharing good news, coordinating the Wassam campaign. You can see that at Wassam.com or, you know, on the Facebook, on the Wassam Facebook page. And the Block Grant Program, this is a community development block grant. This is money that comes from the federal government to the city directly. We are considered an entitlement city, so we receive about $600,000 annually from the federal government that then funds a variety of nonprofit organizations that tackle social problems in the city, funds housing projects and improvement programs, and funds loans for small businesses. So gives you some idea of that. We've also just received an additional appropriation as part of the CARES Act, you know, the Stimulus Act, of $300,000, and that's going through the public review process right now, likely allocated towards a small business micro loan and grant program and support with community action for housing support for those who may lose their housing because of the calamity. So the Block Grant Program is administered then or advised by a community advisory committee that's made up of 12 citizens and one alder person. They work to allocate those funds annually and track how they are spent, and that goes through finance as well. Homesteading has been a real key. This is the next page, page eight, a real key to our strategy over the past couple of years. We have 50 business partners in our Live It Up Loan Program, which has allocated over $700,000 worth of home loans to employees of businesses to buy homes in the city. And this has been a strategic goal to help employees be connected to their neighborhood and tied to the city as homeowners, because we know, you know, that's an important goal from a neighborhood stabilization perspective and from a attraction and retention of talented workers perspective. And just this spring, we're doing two of what we call the Fix It Up Loans. There'll be, there's a home on Stewart and a home on Chicago, which are both being heavily renovated with a jumbo loan from the city, all new windows, new siding, new, new materials and stuff like that. And those are, are being kind of transformed this spring by contractors in, you know, in, in that call. The Business Campus was heavily expanded in 2017. A major focus of the Development Department was adding additional capacity for manufacturing space. We bought 205 acres and then developed that with a new road, water, and sewer, and all the infrastructure elements for that. That was part of, you know, some of the debt that was borrowed in the past couple of years was going to build out that section of the Business Campus. That's now complete. That's called Innovation Way. It's one of the newest streets in the city. You can go see it off of County O on the far west side of the city, and it's the home of Wausau Chemical and, and the new Great Lakes Cheese Facility, you know, which added 125 jobs in the city as well. It's also the only state-certified development-ready site in Marathon County, so we went through an extensive process to receive that certification statewide, and there is still land available there for, you know, manufacturing and expansions, which, which was our goal. And the city has also backed a variety of small businesses and especially a focus on what we call like the craft or maker economy, so a smaller segment of that, folks especially producing unique or craft elements or artisan-type of products. I've learned in Wisconsin, that generally revolves around alcohol, but it's not required that it involves alcohol, but it often does. So you have things like the Whitewater Music Hall, a big project of our department, the Museum of Contemporary Art in a former Wausau club, a key part of our project, the Barrel House recently approved by council, the Timekeeper Distillery and the renovated depot, the Wausau World Market, so on and so forth. Another, like I mentioned, a key goal has been diversifying housing choice. So our housing study is very clear about, you know, Wausau's challenges. One of our Wausau's challenges is the amount of unique or interesting or diverse housing options within the city. We have a lot of kind of middle-of-the-road housing options. We lack some of the unique or interesting higher-end options in the market, and we also don't have enough affordable housing in the market. It's not unusual for cities our size to be in that predicament. It's what planners often call, call a missing middle of housing, which exists in a lot of kind of smaller or, you know, kind of smaller cities. And so, you know, we didn't have kind of the same architecture types, you know, that bigger cities often had, and then can leverage that for diverse housing needs. So one project we did on Third Street across from the Glass Hat is, you know, the creation of Wausau's first townhome essentially, you know, first row house that really, you know, Wausau didn't have row houses. We never had that type of density. But those row houses are, you know, very marketable because, you know, it's especially meaningful to maybe a young professional who wouldn't want to buy a whole house right away, but would like to step out of being just a renter, or a empty nester who wants to downscale from a larger house but wants to stay in the community and be vested. You know, just some information on, you know, on businesses that have a key to the city. Business Assistance has been, you know, kind of a key program. You know, just a rundown of some of that, you know, in over 40 years in our department, we've helped 100 businesses or so with a variety of different programs, you know, for their expansion. There's 800 jobs associated with, you know, the city's development agreements in the Business Campus, primarily in manufacturing. So, you know, those, those folks are, you know, are here because of the city's participation with the, with the business sector. We've given $2.2 million in small business loans since 2008, and we've done about $17 million worth of lending across a whole variety of loans, and many of those loans have gone to renovate, say, for example, many of the buildings downtown, you know, with a variety of different efforts to, to improve those buildings over the years and help the businesses as they, as they exist. Tax increment financing is always, you know, a hot topic. I always like to say anything that starts with the word tax right in it isn't going to be too popular, but, you know, I think, you know, the TIF program in the city is, you know, is, is well-run. There are 1,300 districts statewide. There are 39 in Marathon County. We have eight. We just closed TIF number five. A few more will close in the next couple of years. You know, obviously, you know, anytime you have a TIF district established in that area, the TIF district, the district itself takes the new increment. It doesn't take any of the taxes that are currently being paid, but any new increment goes into the TIF district for a period of time. But it also takes all the project expenses that are being undertaken in that district. So for example, you know, at Finance last night, they were just approving an additional million dollars worth of street paving from a TIF district on the west side that had been very successful. And so, you know, that, that's being funded by the TIF district, and it means that that, that that road paving project is being funded by the growth within that district and not by the general levy itself, not by, you know, not by general taxpayers. So, you know, there is advantages to using the program. It's one of the few tools that any community in Wisconsin has to leverage development or leverage resources. You know, the next page, you can see, this chart is better in color, so I can email to you if you like, but what it, it does kind of describe is that the majority of what Wausau, the vast majority of what Wausau spends in the two big boxes are, are associated with, you know, with expense, with real expenses, okay? And so the, the very small pieces at the top are things like developer incentives and fees and other things. You know, we have, we, we allocate very little of our TIF expenses to those things. So yes, there are cases where the city will use TIF to incentivize a developer or, you know, provide a rebate on, you know, some of their taxes when they're doing a new project. Those are tools to incentivize the project, but the vast majority of the TIF expenses are spent on infrastructure, on roads, on water and sewer, on improvements in the neighborhood, on things like the Riverlife Park, you know, stuff like that, tangible improvements that everyone sees and that, you know, are public goods, you know, are not gifts to developers or anything else, although, you know, again, the council does make the occasional gift, you know, on a, on a project that, that's valuable to the city. So, and then you can see just the development strategy from 2019. This is what the ED Committee had adopted as kind of the key elements, and, you know, the ED Committee will work on doing one for 2020 as well. And this other paper that, that I passed out as well is, this is the Mission and Goals Paper. Each depart, each division, you know, again, economic development, planning, the CDA, and the Community Development Department, which would be like block grant, housing and neighborhood stuff. Each one devises every year their set goals and strategies that they, that they want to focus on, and then those are approved by the different committees that oversee them, whether it's the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Committee, the Citizens' Advisory Committee, or the CDA Board of Commissioners, when they review those and they kind of set, set strategy for the, for the department. So, questions?
That was quite a lot. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Call me anytime.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. Tony?
I'll be much shorter. My name is Toni Vanderboom. I'm the Human Resources Director. The Human Resources Department is a staff of three, myself, a senior human resources generalist, and an administrative assistant, too. Our senior generalist position largely focuses on a lot of benefit issues, while our administrative assistant does a lot of our hiring and recruiting. I think most everybody has a general understanding of what human resources departments do, so I have the privilege to be brief. Our department is largely responsible for workforce planning, recruitment and hiring, benefits, labor relations, compensation, performance management, risk management, and training and development. I also serve as the social media coordinator. And if anyone, I'm not going to go into those areas in detail because I think everybody has a pretty basic understanding of them, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them either today or in private. I would invite you for a tour, but our office is pretty boring. One item that may be of particular interest for this body of individuals is that human resources is responsible for staff and not elected officials. So when we pass human resources policies, they are intended to cover staff and not the body unless you particularly vote to be covered by that policy. So generally speaking, you're only covered, only employees are covered and not elected officials. That is just one question that tends to come up a little bit, so. Any questions?
Questions?
I see none. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
Leslie's going to bring up a couple, four or five slides. Good evening. I'm Jerry Klein. I'm the Director of the City-County IT Commission, and Leslie's City-County Information Technology Commission, IT. Hopefully it's on the slide down here. All right. So we are, we're technically not a department of the city, but we provide the IT services for the city. So we're, there's 30 of us. It's a separate organization, but it's basically owned by the city, the county, and North Central Healthcare. It's been around a long time. It started in 1974. It's had a couple of different iterations on it, and it's in its current form for the last nine years or so. We support about 2,000 PCs, which are mostly here in the, in the city of Wausau, at the city property, county property, North Central Healthcare. But North Central, in case you're not aware of it, has a few other properties. They have an office in Antigo, Tomahawk and Merrill, and then they just recently took over Pinecrest Nursing Home up in Merrill as well. And then we do a little bit of other support for some, some other agencies that'll, that'll be obvious on the third slide. If you go to the next slide, Governance Model. So we, I report to a Board of Directors that's made up of whoever's the mayor and the finance director for the city, whoever's the highest elected and appointed positions at the courthouse for the county, whoever's the CEO and CFO for North Central Healthcare, and then we have two members from the community. So I report to the Board of Directors. We track all of the time that we spend for each of our customers. Every, every, at the end of every pay period, our staff does a timesheet and they report what project they worked on and who they did it for. And that allows us to, to split up the operating cost that runs us. And if you look at the slide, we, right now, the, it's, it moves around a little bit, but basically the county pays about 42% of our operating budget. North Central pays about 37%, and the city's about 21%. The total budget's about $4.3 million. And then one thing we do besides just splitting up our operating budget is we have a support charge for every phone, smartphone, PC, and laptop. And the purpose of that is to just kind of make sure that department heads have skin in the game, so that if they maybe get to the end of the year and they've got some money left over in their budget, they don't say, hey, let's buy an extra laptop for everybody or let's make sure that everyone has a laptop and a desktop. And that brings in about $800,000 of our operating budget. And it's really just meant to be there as a way for people to understand that there's a long-term cost for supporting technology. We are on the third floor of this building. We rent about two-thirds of the third floor, and we pay back to the city $9,900 a month in, in rent. So the city pays us money and then gets money back, and it makes sense because we're a shared service organization and everything we do has to kind of be split up. A big part of our job is to prioritize the work we have, and we have a, I think that's on the next, no, that's right. I'll just mention that we have a prioritization process, and we say we have a small committee. New project requests come in from departments or from us, and they get, they get put in front of the prioritization committee. We track about 50 projects that we have, that we're requested to do sometimes, you know, kind of varies. We, we finish a couple every month and get a couple of new ones every month. But I would say on average, we're running about 15 to 20 projects that we're actively working on. And then the rest of the projects are getting started, maybe we're ordering stuff and doing it as it comes along. If you go to the next slide, this is kind of just a quick picture. We actually support about 450 pieces of software, but some of them are tiny and take, you know, almost no support. But we have a couple that I think that are worth But we have a couple that I think that are worth noting for you guys. And the, and the list here is these are the ones that are really shared across to everybody. So our common network is, is across, is supported by everybody, the firewalls and switches that we use, the control systems that we use for authentication. Our email system is the, is a single system, and then all of the different, various different pieces of software that we use to secure our environment are all shared across to all of our customers. And then when you get into the software that's used, that one of the biggest pieces we do is law enforcement. We support a system called Superior. The city and the county bought that together. We just replaced, that system's been replaced and it was, the new system was put in in the end of 2018. And that's, that system runs the jail, it runs dispatch, it runs the records, and really all 11 law enforcement agencies in the county. So that goes from, you know, Spencer, Stratford, Marathon, to Everest Metro, the city of Wausau Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, they all use that same system. The value of that is, is that they get to share intelligence, work together on stuff, they can see, the detectives can work together, and then all of that information looks the same when it goes to the District Attorney's Office. So that's kind of one of the biggest systems that we support. We also have a shared financial system called Kianta that the city and the county both share, North Central has their own because they have, they need one that's more specific to healthcare. And the Kianta system's been around for 26 years. It's had, it's had some upgrades, but it's, it's tired and old and you'll hear when you, when we get to the CIP process that that is a critical system that we're replacing as our, as our next big system. And then we have a couple others. Eric mentioned the GIS system and Mary Ann mentioned our document management system. Two years ago, when I did a similar presentation to this, we had 4.8 million documents in our document management system. So I have no idea what we have now, but it's probably much more than that. And then we have a lot of camera systems that we support, fixed cameras and in-car camera systems. We have probably 500 fixed cameras between all of the cameras that are in buildings like this and the courthouse and the jail. Parking ramps, every parking ramp has about two dozen cameras in it. And then all 118 squad cars that support all those 11 law enforcement agencies have cameras in them, in the, all around the community. Next slide, only two more. I'm actually going to go through this, oh, can you go back one, Leslie? Sorry. The second, the one that says challenges, thank you. So this is actually a slide that I had from previous and it's pretty small print, but I'll just focus on two things. One, we have a lot of requests for technology. I don't think that's going to go away. It's certainly not going to go away with the pandemic. We've been called upon to do a lot of support, like moving you guys to WebEx, right? But we, again, we support about typically have kind of in our pool of projects that we're working on, 40 to 50 projects. So there's a lot of demand for technology. There's a lot of value in technology because it makes people more efficient, but that requires us to do a lot of prioritization. And then the other, the only other really big risk I'll mention to you is security. We, we have to balance the ease of use of people working together and ease of use of sharing information against the risk that that provides. And it's a big part of our job is to try to maintain that. We have HIPAA data in our systems, we have personal financial information in our systems, and we have law enforcement, and they all have tons of regulation. So if you go to the last slide, I just quick mentioned that a couple, back in 2011, we worked to, to build a shared fiber backbone that goes through the city. It's kind of a big Z shape. And we did that as a partnership between the Wausau School District, the North Central Technical College, and city and county government. And that's been a huge success story for us that has allowed us to go from a really small internet connection that we were, that was way undersized for the, the access that we needed to 10 gigabit connection that we have to the internet that the school district uses, the tech college uses, we use, and we still have plenty of capacity to go on it. That fiber network can kind of zigzags through the town and it connects up as many government buildings as we could, as many schools as we could, and as many nonprofit education entities as we could. So that's, that's called the Wausau Community Area Network, and we created that entity to stand by itself and kind of maintain and monitor and manage the development of that shared fiber network. Any questions? Thank you.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a question, but I took a tour of the police department and I didn't realize that our little small city has an NCI, as you know, where there's cameras on the wall and posts for every part of the city. It's really rather impressive and I, yeah.
We just built a new dispatch center and put a whole bunch of new technology. If you guys ever get a chance, go get a tour of the dispatch center at the courthouse. They dispatch for Wausau Police Department there, and they have a lot of technology. They have six monitors in front of them. Every monitor's got critical pieces of information. And what you were talking about is, is the camera feeds that we use for the part of that system. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you were probably in the patrol lieutenant's office, most likely. Yep.
Lisa? Do you have a question?
Jerry, can you talk a little bit about device security? All of us have been issued a city-owned iPad. Talk a little bit about scams and phishing emails, what we should do if that comes in, and talk about the device itself. You know, is it possible or should we be or not be, you know, downloading apps onto those devices or anything like that? Can you just give us a little thumbnail about the use of those devices?
Yep, I will. So you guys all have iPads, I think, except for Deb Ryan is using a laptop, but your iPads have a piece of software on them called, the category is called MDM. It's Mobile Device Management Technology. We actually are on our second generation of that, and we put that on everybody's phone, whether it's a personal phone that wants to access our, our email system or a city Wausau provided phone, all of your iPads. And what that software does is it encrypts a small part of the hard drive that we, where we put our stuff and allows us to change the password on it if we want to. And it allows us to see where it is. If you lost it, we can help you with it. One of the things that happens if you lose us, if you lose your phone, if you lose your Apple phone or forget your password, that's a bad thing. And the MDM software allows us to kind of override that. So it's a pretty cool tool. If I want to, if someone leaves the organization and we want to delete it, we can send a delete to it, and instead of deleting all of your personal pictures on there, it just deletes the information that we placed on it. We, we put one piece of software, besides the MDM software that we install, we also install GoodReader, and I think hopefully maybe you've seen that already. That's a PDF tool that is kind of a little easier tool to, to read your packets and minutes on. If you haven't had a chance to play with it, there's a really neat markup place in there, so as you're reading through stuff, you can take a, take your finger and circle things and it'll remind you what to look at and what to ask about when someone like me is in front of you as part of a presentation. You can make notes ahead of time. So that's a pretty cool tool. As far as installing software, I would prefer that you don't, but there's, there's a few pieces of common software that I'd be comfortable with people installing that they, that many of you have used, and if you want, you can call the help desk and ask to do that. It's a little hard to stop everybody from installing anything, but there are some ones that we are already familiar with that we'd be comfortable with. Lisa, what else did you ask? I'm sorry, there was remote, mobile, oh, phishing.
The other thing I, I thought was we should really talk about just quickly scam and phishing emails. We've had some instances where council members have received those, not always a test, so just a little advice on that maybe?
Yep, thank you. That, that's a huge risk. Our network is people phishing tests, which is phishing emails, which are emails that are sent to you and what they want you to do is click on something in either an attachment or a link in it. The best practice is to just never do that, but there, there are some, there, we do have training tools and I, and I can pass that out to, send an email to you guys. We do have phishing training. We offer in-person phishing training. We have videos available. We also send occasionally out, we have a piece of software that sends phishing emails that are, that we want you to recognize as phishing emails and then ignore them. But if you click on the attachment in it or the link in it, what it does is it says, hey, we were testing you and you failed. And so we'd like you to take a training and it directs you to a two or three minute long video. The best thing I could do without spending a lot of time tonight is to pass on links to where we have some of our training material.
I just, I want to share an experience I had on the county side. And then again, on the library board, one of the things that's happening is people are creating accounts, like email accounts, and they're, they're saying, oh, hey, I'm Kurt Gibbs. And then they'll email every single person on the county board, and that's 38 people saying, oh, you know, I need you to contact me, I need your cell phone number, it's an emergency. And if you don't read the email very quick, like you don't read the email from, it, you'll, you'll be like, yeah, sure, text me. Well, I started getting text messages from some rando from somewhere. It was very apparent when that person was texting me, like, okay, this is not right, but just heads up, even, even I kind of, kind of heard from people.
Yeah, so two of the, thank you, Mayor. So two of the things, and when you do, when you take training on phishing, how to recognize a phishing email, it'll, it'll tell you a bunch of things, but two of the most important things is to look super closely at the email. And a lot of times it's the tiniest little language, like instead of apple.com, it'll be apple dot C O N or apple spelled with an extra P in it. So you have to look incredibly close at the, at the exact spelling of the person's domain for their email. And then the second thing is if there's any links in it, most of the time you can take your mouse and, and hover over a link and see where it goes. And you, the, the description of the link does not have to match where it's actually taking you, and that's what the training teaches you to identify. My best practice is if you ever get an email from anything that's like a bank, we all get, we all get emails from banks that we don't do business with, but if you get an email from a bank, just, and it tells you that there's something wrong with your web, your, your account or something, just delete the email, go to your, log into your bank the normal, the way you normally do, and if there was something that they needed to tell you about, they would tell you about it on their website. Does that help, Lisa?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
See anymore. Chief Blevin, are you ready?
I am as ready as I'm going to be.
Okay, I'll take it.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for giving us an opportunity to talk tonight about our departments. I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, if you want to come down for an extended version of an orientation, I'd be happy to, to meet with you here at the police department, at the good fortune of meeting with three of the new council members down here at the police department or via WebEx. And we talked about a lot of different things, so I would encourage everybody to hit me up if you want to do that. I'd be happy to talk in more depth about some of these issues. Moving to that, that second slide, you know, I think most people have a good concept of what law enforcement does, what the, what a police officer is and what our typical day might, might be like. So I thought I'd just talk a little bit about our philosophy of policing, because, you know, you can go across the state or across the nation and there's a lot of different types of policing that you'll encounter in communities. So what, what our philosophy here is we are a mission-driven organization and the Wausau Police Department strives for excellence and partners with our community to enhance the quality of life. And there's really three key components within that mission statement, and the first piece is strives for excellence. The first, the first piece in terms of excellence is that people, you know, the most important thing is who is working for our agency and for our community and how are they going about their work? So we, we spend a lot of time in a hiring process. We do, it takes about four months to about half a dozen interviews officers before they get hired, go through a polygraph examination, an in-depth background investigation, psychological examination, and a physical exam. So, so that's a very intensive process before officers get hired, and we look for character. We will hire for character and we'll train for skills, and that's been our motto for a number of years now. We can teach a lot of people to be, you know, to handcuff people, to shoot a gun, those types of things, but we can't necessarily teach them to be good people and to, to be honest and professional and respectful people that we, so the people that we have here, you know, that's a really critical piece, and then we invest in them in training throughout their career, and we set high expectations for, for our staff here. I mean, another piece is how we operate in our policy manual. We are an accredited agency. There's less than 10% of the agencies in our state that are accredited. Every three years, we have the agency that does the accreditation called Wiley Egg come on site, and they were here in February and went through 550 standards for each of the last three years, and we had to prove to them that we meet the standards that they've set for, for credit for the accrediting body. Just, just learned yesterday that we met that standard and we've been accredited again for the next three years. And so that's an important piece in terms of being trustworthy to our community that, that we are following the best practices in our, in our profession. And then the last piece of excellence I'll talk about is, is innovation and being creative and how we go about our work. I think the best example that we have recently is our therapy dog program. We have a couple of school resource officers who have therapy dogs in the schools and, you know, that, that has been a great project and a great innovation within our agency that we've been recognized nationally for. And so, you know, we, we want to be an agency that doesn't always do things the way we used to do it. We want to strive for excellence and think about what does excellence look like in every situation, every encounter, and in every project. The second piece of that mission is we, we partner with our community. You know, law enforcement does nothing if we don't have trust within our community. So, so that partnership is really, really key to how we go about our work. Building relationships, both individually and organizationally, is critical to our success. Law enforcement today is being asked to do far more things, a wider variety of things than we've ever been asked to do. And so we have to have relationships across our community to be able to resolve some of those issues. And so some of the things that have been, you know, in the, in the media lately that we've been working on, things like homelessness, mental health issue, addiction, racism, all of those things are, you know, when, when those things are occurring in our community, they're looking to law enforcement to solve those problems. And, you know, we, we have a hammer which is arresting people, but, you know, that, that isn't the way to solve any of those issues. And so we have to, we have to create partnerships across our community to be able to resolve those issues. And then lastly is, you know, the same reason you're here tonight, same reason that I'm here and the rest of our, our department heads in the city are here is because we want to make our community a better place. Live here, our families live here, our kids go to school here, so we have a best of interest for that quality of life. And that's what we talk about on a daily basis. We talk about it monthly at our staff meetings, is that mission and how we go about our work. That's a little bit about the philosophy here at the Wausau Police Department. And so if you want to talk more depth about that, I'd be happy to do so. On that third slide is just a, just a really, a really basic overview of, of our department. You can go on, on our website and you can see, you know, a lot more information in depth about our budget or about our org chart and those types of things, but the, the long and short of it is we have a $10 million budget. Vast majority of that budget, almost 90%, is the personnel, the salary and benefits. And another 8% is, you know, our fleet, the vehicles that we use to get to and from, IT like Jerry talked about, we have a lot of technology that we need, that we utilize. So, so we're, we're pretty lean organizationally and, and we work hard to try and fund grants that we can apply for and, and enhance our operations here. Currently, we have a number of grants totaling a little bit over $300,000. We have 79 sworn police officer positions. We're currently at 76, looking for a couple of positions, a few positions, and we have 10 civilian positions. Sometimes people ask how many police officers are out on the street at any given times. That's a frequently asked question, and, and our minimum staffing level is seven patrol officers, although on, in a typical day, we will have more than that, upwards of 10 or 11 is, is a little more common than that. And we respond to about 40,000 calls per service a year. So that's just a little bit about our operations. And then that last slide is just a couple of frequently asked questions that, that the council members sometimes ask. So if you get contacted by a constituent and you want to communicate to, to that to the police department, how do you do so? First and foremost, I would say that direct communication from people that are having issues in the, in the community is best, so if you encourage them to call our night emergency line or emergency line, obviously if it's an emergency, if the issue is occurring, that's the best thing to do. But you can always, if you have an email from a constituent, send it on to me and I can get it to the right people here at the police department, and we will interact directly with that citizen, and if you request feedback, we can certainly give you that feedback as well as transferring it in those neighborhoods. And then the next question is if a constituent has a concern about how an officer handled an incident or they have a complaint against the officer, you can certainly reach out to me. We take complaints against officers very, very seriously. We investigate every single complaint, no matter how in-depth that complaint is. We do have body cameras, as many of you know. We do have body cameras, as many of you know, so, you know, it's really a good tool for us to be able to look back and see how an officer communicated, and how they handled an incident. And sometimes, it's a good opportunity for us to talk to the citizen about why police officers do what they do, and why we do, how we go about our work sometimes. Sometimes that educational piece is more important, to get them to understand, you know, why the officer committed it. And then lastly, how can get more information from us? We have a wide variety of things that you can do to get information from us. Social media is a big one. You know, we have Facebook page, Twitter account, we're on Instagram, we have a YouTube channel, wide variety of social media sites. Obviously, our website has our annual report, our monthly newsletter, which is The Informer. We have a new site, which is the P to C, which is the Police to Citizen website, but you can go on there, or anybody in the public can go on there and see the activity that's been going on in the community. They can search by date, they can search by mapping, see kind of what the neighborhood looks like in terms of crime reports and that kind of thing. Everybody at the City Council is copied on any press release we do, so if there's a major incident occurring, and we're issuing a press release, you'll have that in your inbox at the same time as the media. We do have a Citizens Academy, it's 10 weeks long. We'd love to have any of you that are interested in participating in that. We do, we use you a spring and a fall, Citizens Academy. If you don't want to do that, we can set you up for a ride along. Tell us when it's convenient for you. We work 24/7, obviously, so feel free to let me know if you're interested in that, and we'll set you up for a ride along, or two or three, whatever's convenient, whatever you're interested in. And then we have nine neighborhood groups, we have a police officer at every one of those meetings monthly, and, you know, there's a good contact there for you about what's going on in the Police Department as well, or in that neighborhood. And, you know, you can always feel free to call me or email me if you have any additional questions or comments. Thank you, guys.
Ben, are you still on?
I am.
Okay, I just, could you just briefly, and I don't want you to go into depth, but briefly tell the new council members how your department is staffing different for COVID. I think that's, it's interesting, and it's something that is asked about in the community a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. So since March 23rd, we have been on what I've called an emergency shift schedule as a result of COVID-19. We received the shift schedule from Superior Police Department, they implemented just a few days before we did. Subsequent, an Appleton Police Department is on the same schedule. We've actually talked to a lot of departments across the country about the schedule. You know, so the idea behind the schedule, before I give the details, is that, you know, we don't know what the pandemic is going to bring. We know that our role at the Police Department is to provide for the safety and the security of our community. In order to do that, we need police officers who are healthy and not sick, not quarantined. And so we usually run rotations, you know, they work, they work seven out of every 14 days. And so we know that, you know, if one officer's gonna get sick, that many of the officers on that rotation are going to be sick. So we did implement this schedule, which is, we broke it down into now four rotations, A, B, C, and D. There are seven officers on day shift, seven officers on night shift, and so it takes 64 officers and supervisors to run this rotation. And so they work six days on, and then, and they work 12-hour days, so six 12-hour days in a row, and then they have 12 days off, and then they have six days of on-call, where they have to be ready to come in if we have somebody that's sick or a major incident that's going on, so we have the staffing to provide that. And we are currently looking at, obviously, the governor's safer home order runs through May 26th. That's at least the current information, and so we're looking at transitioning back to normal scheduling at the end of May 26th.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Who's next? Jamie?
Chief Cacciallo.
Oh. Okay. Tracy, are you on?
I am on, yep.
Okay. Are you ready?
I sure am.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay. I think my PowerPoint presentation is up there, right, Leslie?
I'll put it up right now for you.
Okay. But first of all, I appreciate the opportunity, the chance, citizens of the Wausau Fire Department to y'all. I know many of you are members, new members to the council, so it's exciting for me to get the opportunity to talk about our department. If you ever want to visit us in person, that's wonderful, we welcome that visit, and we'd love to show you around our stations and show you the equipment that we have available to us to serve our community. So the Wausau Fire Department's mission statement, in 2016, we ventured into creating a strategic plan, and that was the first ever by the Wausau Fire Department. And in that strategic plan, we developed, obviously, our mission statement, which is listed there, the Wausau Fire Department exists to provide rapid, professional emergency services to protect and enhance our community. And we also looked at our core values. The first four of those core values listed, professionalism, accountability, integrity, and respect, are also the city's core values. So we agreed that the city's core values were important to us, and that they certainly fit with what our values were at the Wausau Fire Department. But we also added the core value of compassion, because we felt that our department has to have compassion for our community to be able to do a really good job in serving our community. Along with the mission statement and the core values, you know, the strategic plan is about 50 pages long, and in there, it also talks about our vision. We did a thought analysis. We also looked at strategic initiatives. We have eight of them, ranging from recruitment and retention, the financials of the department, the city as an organization, the department as an organization, training and development. We have eight different initiatives, and in each one of those initiatives, we have strategic initiatives, or goals and objectives listed, so we can achieve those strategic initiatives. When we did the strategic plan, we also, we also, we had 26 members of our department that participated, and we also had six members of the community at large. So we had some really good input externally from our department when we put the strategic plan together. I just want to go over the organizational chart. It's probably easiest for me to show you what we look like as an organization, sort of organizational chart. So you can see that the executive charge is actually the deputy chief's position, and that's currently occupied by Bob Bartek. Actually, he's a fairly new hire to our department. He's been with us just over a year, and he's doing a tremendous job for us, and really has activated really, really well from us, with us. He came from the Wausau Fire Department. And under Bob's tutelage, is actually the training division, and the EMS division chief as well. Both of those divisions clearly are fairly new to our department. Our EMS division chief was actually hired at the same time Bob was. He was a former employee of ours, he was a firefighter medic, he got his nursing degree, and then went away to practice nursing, and then decided he wanted to come back, and he's been a straight addition bachelor in our department. Our EMS division has flourished tremendously with Jared Thompson back in that position. Our training division chief was just hired about two months ago. He came from the city of Stevens Point, he was a lieutenant there, and we are really excited to have him onboard as well. He's doing a tremendous job for us, training in the fire capacity, and he's fitting very, very well with us. When you look at the organizational chart, those items in white are actually 40-hour work for these people, and those that are in colored are actually mine personnel, so they work a 56-hour work week. We actually have 61 sworn staff, and then we have one non-worn staff, which is our administrative assistant. Lee Walker is our administrative assistant, she does a great job of keeping us organized and focused, and a lot, she's got a lot of different talents for us. She does a lot of our computer work, and a lot of our software stuff, and she does a great job of keeping us on path. With the crews, I'll jump back to the color part of this now, but you can see there's a red crew, a blue crew, and a green crew, so we have an A, B, and a C crew. With the white crew, we have the ship commander, which is a battalion chief, and obviously, he, by his name, you can tell that he just runs the ship. He makes sure that the ship runs smoothly, and he's the incident commander, the initial incident commander on any scene. Under his, under him is three fire lieutenants, one in each of the stations, and I'll talk a little about both the stations coming up. We have three different stations, so there's a fire lieutenant at each station, and they're the company officers, and they actually advise their crews. So it's an engineer and firefighter paramedics. We do have four engineers, two at the outside stations, and two down at Central, and then we have 10 firefighters that are dispersed throughout as well. So there's 18 people, these are the crews, three crews, as I stated earlier, and we have a minimum staffing of 15 on each of those crews. Our work schedule is kind of a little bit different, they call it the California schedule, so the crews that work 24 hours on, they'll go off for 24, they'll come back on for 24, they'll go off for 24, they'll come back on for 24, and then they'll have four days off. That's the normal schedule of the crews, and they get on shift at 7:00 at first, and they know their, obviously, they know their schedule until they switch crews. So that's certainly nice for them to know that. We have the fire position and the special bureau, which is over to the right. Our fire marshal leads that, that's Kate DeSantis, she does a wonderful job of leading that bureau. And then we have the inspection lieutenants, with Sean Carter, or I mean, Frank Stoll, and then our firefighter paramedic is Sean Carter, within that bureau as well. They do all of the inspections within the city, and they do most of the public education throughout the city, too. The line personnel actually will help with public education as well. So that's our department in a nutshell. I'll just introduce our stations. You know, our station one, which we call Central, as I said before, I was a battalion chief. We've got an engine, one engine here, we actually have two ambulances here, one that is staffed, and the other one, if all three ambulances are out, are primary ambulances, we will staff a fourth ambulance to go out with fire personnel, so we'll move people up a fire truck, the fire vehicle is in, put a minor ambulance in, so we can get a fourth ambulance out the door. We have a ladder truck here at Central, and a rescue. People that are assigned to the ladder truck are also assigned to the rescue, so if we have structure fires, they'll actually get on the ladder truck, if we have any type of rescue, whether it's water rescue, or confined space rescue, or extirpation, they'll actually get on the rescue, and they'll respond with the rescue. We have hazmat, we have hazmat vehicles here, and we also have rescue boats here, those are, you know, assigned to those. They're actually assigned, when those types of emergencies come in, the battalion chiefs will actually assign to those vehicles. As you can see, the 40-hour work, 40-hour people are actually at Central as well, so we have myself, the deputy chief, the training chief, the special bureau, and the admin assistant up here at Central as well. Station two, we have an engine, which is staffed by two, and an ambulance staffed by two, and we have the reserving, and that's actually helped out there as well. As you may know, we're in the process of replacing the two of our planes, and I'll talk about that a little bit in a later slide. Station three is also the same way. We have an engine and ambulance, and we have the reserve ambulance attached out there in case one of our ambulances breaks down. The engine has two personnel, and the ambulance has two personnel, and that's over on Upper Street. What's our role in our standing? You know, we, EMS, EMS is, you know, about between 88 and 90% of our call volume. And we have critical care paramedics and paramedics that are employed here. Critical care paramedics basically have an advanced scope of practice, and they're pretty specific to interfacilling transports, and it includes, you know, certain types of medics, being able to access like central lines and ports, and a little more extensive training in ventilators. We don't do many interfacilling transports, but we do oblige the vet center, our central vet center, and use, and, you know, they actually come in very handy when we actually transport these critical patients from there to the hospital. The fire companies, you know, obviously, structural firefighting is mostly what they're tasked with. That's not, that's their highest call volume, because that's, you know, that's their highest call volume. We responded last year, our fire companies responded to about 15 EMS responses, and we sometimes, or most often, would get calls, or get asked, why do fire trucks respond with ambulances? And one of the reasons that we send fire companies with ambulances is because we can care for the patient in a, you know, a lot more efficiently and effectively. We have them respond in critical situations, so people that are closest to non-reasons, people that are having a stroke or a heart attack, individuals that are, have auto-level consciousness, like seizures, that can be very complicated in nature. So anytime that we think that we can expedite care for people in critical situations, per the dispatch information, what we do is, we actually send an engine with them, because we have a benchmark of 10 minutes that we want to be at the patient's side, transporting critical patients through the emergency department within a 10-minute timeframe. And in order to do that, we need all hands on deck. So that's the reason that fire engines respond with ambulances, and if you see an engine with an ambulance, it's often it's a critical call. They also do, go to different types of service calls, carbon monoxide calls, you know, fire alarm activations are called, burning the flames, things like that. They do all the extrication, so whether it's vehicle extrication, or extrication from machinery, we can call to those types of, that's when the rescue will respond. We're actually the type two headsets team of the state of Wisconsin, so we have the hazardous materials team here for the state of Wisconsin, and we staff that. And then we, we also respond to, we respond to any emergency that we're called to, but we also have additional training in confined space, high-low angle rescue training, water, swift water rescue, ice rescue, things like that. In our fire prevention bureau, and also our line staff, and even, you know, myself and the other chiefs of the department, will do public education, and then also inspections there, so. The next slide is just general statistics. I don't want to get into too much, but just to give you an idea of what we do. Like I said before, about 80, 90% of our business is EMS-related. What is it, like I said, what is it really showing on this particular graph is that we have 687 fire service calls, but we actually have 1,500 more than that, that are actually enveloped into the, to the 1,500 calls for EMS. Because we don't want to be redundant in our reporting, the fire company is part of that call, so we don't report it twice. So we actually go up 1,500 additional times to assist the EMS, as I mentioned before. We do respond outside the city to the entities that are actually mentioned. We have contracts with the village of Van, the town of Wausau, the town of Tethers, the town of Spick, the town of Hewitt, the town of Berlin, and we do have EMS contracts, and you can see their call logs in 2019. About 5% of our calls, we run outside the city, otherwise 90% of our calls are within the city limits. As Ben mentioned earlier, you know, we also hire for character, and we train for skill. We know the benefits of hiring people with a high level of character, and I'd We know the benefits of hiring people with a high level of character and a great work ethic. And so through our hiring process, we try to obviously detect those types of people and hire those types of people. And the hiring requirements that we have for our firefighter paramedics are listed here. So we require an associate's degree, so either a fire medic or fire science type of degree, or something in a related field. Or we'll accept 60 college credits that are in some related field as well. They have to be state and Wisconsin certified and nationally registered paramedic. They have to be firefighter one and two certified. They have to be hazmat operations certified, and they also have to pass the candidate's physical ability test, which is basically a physical agility test. We do have some preferred qualifications, and that's a certification as a hazmat technician, because that's what's required to be able to be part of our state Level Two state hazmat team. So we would prefer to hire people with that certification, and also those that have driver operator pumper certifications and aerial certifications. So those are some of our preferred qualifications for our hiring. The current projects that we're working on, what's taken up the last couple months is open 19. You know, our people are on the front lines, and they respond into situations that we're relying on dispatch for. And dispatch is only good as the information that they receive. So we're walking into situations that we're not real sure of what the risk is, particularly during these public 19 times. But we develop policies and procedures that we feel are keeping, that they are keeping our people safe. And it's taken a lot of time and effort to move through that and actually disseminate that to the crews. One of the other hurdles that we've been trying to get over is obviously getting the appropriate heat for our people. As you probably know, there's been a shortage throughout the country of essential personal protective equipment, N95, gowns, masks, those types of things. And I think we're up to speed now, but we struggled for a long period of time trying to get enough to actually outfit our people to keep them safe. Another current project is the completion of the new station two, as I mentioned earlier, over in the 50th Parkway. The current station two is 50 years old. You know, the apparatus bays were very small. It was difficult to fit the more modern equipment in the bays. You know, our engines are 15 and 17 years old, and a couple of them are older. But it's, engines were designed much smaller years ago, 50 years ago, when these bays were built. So we struggled to get our equipment in the bays. Our fitness room is actually located in apparatus bay. We have no female facilities at the station. There was no, really no place appropriately to design a locker area. So there's, along with other things that were not functioning appropriately. So we're really fortunate that we're able to build a new station, and it's just a biddies to the current station. We did do a time study and a location study, and it showed that that station was located...
Tracy? Hello? I think we lost her. Lisa, can you hear me?
I see. And it's for personal protective equipment. Our deputy chief, Robert Bartek, is actually writing that grant for us now. And it's due on May 15th. It'll come before finance committee, this next finance committee for approval. We're hoping for approval. It's a 90, 10 grand. So the federal government will pay 90% of the cost, he's responsible for 10%. And like I said, we're in the process of writing that. Every year, assistance firefighter grant, government does put out an AFG grant, and we've written for that every year since I've been here. And we have received several items from this grant. And it, like I said, it's a 90, 10, 90, 10 grant. So we're very, we've been very fortunate through this grant to get different types of equipment for our department. We hope to remodel the health and wellness area of station three. We had some flooding at station three in the basement a couple years ago when we had all that snow. And with that, the perfect, kind of got really rancid, and the walls are really bad down there. So we're hoping to spend some money in a remodel in the basement there. We're continuing our efforts to attain accreditation status. There's about 250 fire departments throughout the country that are accredited agencies, and we're hoping at some point in time, we're going to be able to become one of those. Now, we're working on, since Keith Briggs has gotten here, we're looking at meeting compliance with NFPA and OSHA standards, which is long overdue. He's been doing a great job of getting us up to speed. And our EMS division chief has developed some quality assurance and quality improvement benchmarks, and that's exciting to see as well, see how well we really do in the EMS arena and the fire arena is. But we're always working on succession planning, and we've incorporated a one-day policy and procedure platform, which is less than four. It's implemented at the beginning of this year, but we're in the process of trying to transfer all our policies and procedures into that particular platform. So it's been a lengthy time consuming process. So that is some of our current projects. I won't take any questions, I think, myself.
Go ahead, Lou.
When is the new station scheduled to open? It seems I've been driving by there forever and waiting for it to open.
Yeah. You know, it was supposed to be open the beginning of April, because we had some complications with pouring concrete in the fall because it got cold so quickly. And there was, it was post-prohibitive to actually pour concrete in the fall with those cold temperatures, and the potential of it not setting correctly, so falling and things like that would occur. So we decided to wait till the spring. So the concrete is just being poured now, and the pavement will be put in after that. So we're looking at the beginning of June now.
Anything else? Okay. Ms. Polly, are you ready? Now, a close break.
Yes, sir.
Okay. She said...
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, good. So yeah, I sent my PowerPoint presentation over as well. I don't, I can't really see the screen very well in the council chambers to know what you're looking at. But going right from the beginning, just a quick overview of my department. And if I'm the last one, I'll try to make this brief. But I'm a little like Jerry, a little bit unique in that I'm a city-county government department. I work technically for the county, which, where I guess our paychecks come from, but we work for both entities. It's been an agreement that's been happening since 1924, so it's worked pretty well over the last almost 100 years. If you go down to our mission statement slide, our department mission, we updated that last year, but we do follow the county's mission and vision in making Marathon County a preferred place to live, work, and visit your business, with being the healthiest, safest, and most prosperous county in the state. Our specific department statement is to adaptively manage our park and forest lands for natural resource sustainability while providing healthy recreational opportunities and unique experience, making our county a desirable place to live, work, and play. Pretty long, but we wanted to cover all of the areas that we cover. So on the next slide, just talks about how our park system works. We're two separate park systems, but we're in a joint department, like I said, since 24. We also have the county forests in our department. So under, with Marathon County, there are 17 county parks. We have 10 county forest units, and we have the specialized facilities within the county, such as our ice arenas, the shooting range. I should have updated this. It's the Marathon County Sports Complex. We'll be looking for a new sponsor here this year. You have Sunnyville Softball, Sunnyville Softball Complex, and then Marathon Park is probably the biggest unique park in our relationship with the Fair Board for the fair. We also do recreation programs on both the city and the county side. For the city, we manage the 33 neighborhood parks that we have. We have an urban forestry program, so the city forester is a part of our department as well. We have 25,000 street trees that we manage. And then we have the specialized facilities, such as Sylvan Hill Athletic Park, the unique relationship that we have with the wood trucks. Our three outdoor aquatic centers, the whitewater rafting parks, skate park 400 block, and the boat launches. Should I add Riverlife there? It's a unique facility that we have as well in our relationship with a private organization of bricks. So going down to the next slide, these are just an overview of the county parks and the forest units, and how they're spread out throughout the county. So we really do cover almost all of Marathon County. And then the next slide is the city parks. And the area in the middle isn't zoomed, it's, there's a separate insert that shows the downtown city parks. But we do pretty much cover, you know, a lot of the city, too, but there are gaps that we look at as development comes forward. We'll be looking at what those gaps are, and deciding whether or not we need a park there, or if it's close enough to a county facility with the amenities that a neighborhood would need. So going to the next slide, as we build the Wausau Marathon County Park System, we look at what the goals are for us of the county, and I believe of the city. I think it goes hand in hand. Our community needs, how we serve all populations, including the underserved populations of the community, trends and unique opportunities that we have. And we do a lot of partnerships. We could not do what we do without the partnerships that we have from private organization, private funders, Central Wisconsin Outdoor Cycling Coalition, and what the trail system, the Nordic Ski Club for what they do to our skiing facilities, the Whitewater Rafting Group for what they do to the rafting area. And I know I'm missing a few here, but we have tremendous partnerships with a lot of the organization. I put on here our two guiding documents that we work pretty closely by, is our comprehensive outdoor recreation plans. We currently have a city separate one and a Marathon County separate one, and we just updated the county one. I do have a plan after 2021, when we're looking to update the city one. I would really like to look at combining these two into one comprehensive outdoor recreation plan for parks and recreation in the entire region. There will be specifics to the county and specifics to the city in it, but I think one document would be easier. And then we also have a 15-year forest comprehensive land use plan in how we manage our county forests, which have a whole different set of laws to them. So going down to the next slide, our county park budget, or our Wausau and county park budget and capital improvements for 2020 is, my department has about a $5.9 million budget that's split pretty evenly between the city and the county, and different years depend on what we're doing. But we do track all of our towns specifically to the projects and the parks that we are in.
Jamie, can you just hang on one second?
Okay, you're all back on my screen, so I don't know if I lost you first again or not. But, and then for our county projects, this is just a short list, but we are also doing playground replacement area road repairs. We're replacing dashboards in our ice arena and different mechanical systems there. So we have, we have a lot of aging facilities in our entire county and city system that we are working to update and keep current and keep safe. And so far, Ben, had a very supportive, very supportive on both the county and the city side in helping us get caught up in some of these areas. So the next slide, serving the county and the city, we, you know, serve the quality of life. Right now, I think it's more apparent than ever of the use of our parks. Even though our playgrounds are closed, we've had more use of all the city and the county parks than I think I've ever seen, and I've only been here twice, although I did grow up here. But even what our staff has seen is people are out and about and excited about what we have, even though there's some restrictions about what we can offer. We play a big part in the tourism with the tournaments that we have and the facilities that we have. So I work closely with the chamber and the CVB on different things to try to promote our department and how we can help with the economic development of the area. And then we, you know, work out for the natural resources as well. Next slide is just a really long list, but probably not all-inclusive of all the activities that we can offer all year long. So we're not just a summer and a spring activity, is we've got something, I think, for everybody all year. The final list is not something you'll be able to see, but I do have these available and is on our website as well, of all the city-county parks and the forests, and what amenities we have in each of those parks. So going down to the last couple of slides are really about the benefits that we've had of parks. I just wanted to put this in there, is, as I mentioned, we've got something for all people to do. And in our life report that the county does with the health department every year, in 2018, Wausau was ranked as the number one small city and second best overall to bike in, in the county, according to People for Bikes, National Advocacy for Cycling Group. So I know our biking community, and as Christian mentioned, the Bike Ped Committee on the city side. We also have one in the county that really does a lot for this community and helps us increase and enhance those facilities as well. And then of the, this is the 2017 numbers. I couldn't quite find 2018, but I'll keep looking and update that. Is that 80% of those respondents were satisfied with our parks and open spaces? Well, 66 were satisfied with availability of safe place to walk and bike. So we have some improvement there, but I think it's also pretty high. And as we continue to work with the community, we have a lot of input in those outdoor recreation plans, I think that we can address some of those areas that we can. The next slide, this is the benefits of local parks. This is a national, a national number informational chart that I got from the National Parks and Recreation Association, that really said 85% of Americans consider high-quality parks and recreational amenities as factors of places when they choose to live somewhere. So if we can keep up our facilities and keep them attractive, we can also help to attract that economic base and all of those jobs that we're trying to get into the community and try to keep people here. So that's how we're working to help with economic development. And then the last slide I have before questions is just the economic benefits of local parks. Parks that, you know, there's the personal benefits, environmental benefits, social, economic, and then the benefits of where we have places that people can recreate. So 83% of Americans, according to the National Park and Rec Association, say that they personally benefit from the local parks. And I think now, if we ask many of our community members during this time that have been in our parks, they might respond a little bit higher, just because it's a place that's free to go, fresh air, even though there are social distancing requirements, it's a nice place to get out and clear your mind from being at home. So that's a brief overview. I'd be happy to, we do have in our department, 44 full-time staff, who are located at two different locations. Here on Myer River Drive is our main office, and our operations campus is out on Party Street by Marathon Park. The county is looking within the next five years to relocate us as one department with the highway department, but we would still stay within or close to the city limits. And that's a choice that the county made on the selection of a site based on our department, knowing that we have to serve the city as well. So we would be close within those boundaries. But I'd be happy to take anybody around to our parks. We try each year, and I don't know how this year will work with our restrictions on social distancing, but we try each year to do a parks tour, where we can take a group around to see the parks and talk about what we're doing in each park, what our plans are, what's been done. And so we were able to do a couple on the county side last year. I would really like to do the city coming up and getting our city council. We'll get a bus, we'll get lunch, and we'll get out and maybe look at what we've got for our parks and get ideas as well as how we can move forward. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I see none. Thank you.
Great.
Greg.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Hang on just a second. I'm having video problems here. I seem to have lost my feed.
We can hear you, Greg. Can you hear us? Yeah, we can hear you.
I wasn't sure if you could hear me.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm Greg Seibert. I'm the Transit Director for the City of Wausau. Metro Ride is the public transit service operated in the city. We are owned and operated and run as a city department. The city has owned us since 1972. We provide two separate services. One is our regular bus service. We run from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. We have seven regular routes that operate at 30-minute intervals. We also add 10 express routes, we call them, on school days. They're meant to handle the heavy passenger loads when school is in session. We run a weekly grocery shopping bus for seniors that serves several senior housing locations throughout the city. We have a bus that operates between downtown and Northern Valley Industries in order to get disabled folks to a sheltered employment opportunity. And last but not least, we operate something called ADA Paratransit. It's a service that's designed to be separate but equal to our fixed route bus service. It's for people who, because of a disability, are unable to use our regular bus service because they can't get to or from a bus stop. It operates much like a taxi service where we pick you up at your origin and we take you to your destination. We have a fairly diverse revenue stream. Most of our expenses are covered by state and federal funding sources. Depending on the year, state and federal funds will cover between 55 and about 62% of our overall expenses. Passenger fares cover 11 to 12%. And then the remainder is paid by the City of Wausau. That's about 30% depending on the year. In terms of who rides the bus, our largest fare category is students. About 43% of our overall riders are students. The next highest category, about 30% are elderly and disabled folks. And then the next category would be adults at about 23% of the overall total. In terms of why people ride, we don't determine this on an ongoing basis, only when we survey. We surveyed last in the fall of 2018. The majority of our riders are going to and from school. The next highest category is 26%, which is work. The next highest category would be for shopping purposes at 20%. So overall, the vast majority of our riders, nearly 80%, are preparing to participate in the economy or are early participating in the economy through work or spending their dollars. In terms of the challenges we currently face, as I mentioned, outside funding, state and federal funding pays the bulk of our overall cost. State funds have been frozen for the better part of the last decade. And state imposed levy limits and shrinking shared revenue dollars have made it difficult for the city to respond. And so we have adjusted in terms of how much we charge for the service. Our passenger fares have gone up and also the, the level of service we provide. We've made a number of cuts. Saturday services, for instance, was eliminated. We shortened our Monday through Friday service day and so on. So the end result of all of that is our services are less available, less affordable, and less useful for the folks who rely on our services. The other downside is that many employment opportunities now lie outside of our boundaries. And that's a real challenge for those who need to shop elsewhere or work elsewhere. In terms of return on your investment, there are a number of studies out there. WISTA has done one on their own. For every dollar invested in public transit, there's a $3 return. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Jacobson.
Everybody's still awake?
Yeah.
Wow.
You'll wake us up, right?
It's the most exciting part. I'll try. I'll give you a break. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ann Jacobson, the city attorney. I've been with the city for 22 years. It'll be on June 8th. I spent the first 10 years as the Assistant City Attorney, so I understand what that job entails as well, and then was appointed the city attorney in 2009. It's my honor to introduce you to the city attorney's office. We have five members and we are located right next to the mayor's office between the mayor's suite and the HR suite. We actually have one of our attorneys, our newest addition, Nathan Miller occupies the office in the mayor's suite. So there have, we have three attorneys and a legal secretary and a legal assistant. Tara Alfonso has been with us eight years and Nathan Miller joined us last September 3rd, so eight years and one, eight months. Obviously, we're succession planning, if you will, for the eventual turnover of the staff in our office. We have one organizational client and we provide in-house legal counsel to the city as a municipal corporation and advice to the members of the body that are acting on behalf of that corporation. We also provide advice to the Community Development Authority, Wausau Water Works, and the Wausau Area Transit System. Our, our job is really defined by statute. It says the attorney under 62.0912 shall conduct all the legal business in which the city is interested, shall, when requested by city officers, give written legal opinions which shall be filed with the clerk, shall draft ordinances, bonds, and other instruments as may be required, shall examine the tax and assessment rolls and other tax proceedings and advise proper city officers. Then it says the council may employ and compensate special counsel to assist in or take charge of any matter in which the city is interested. And we do employ outside counsel, and I will talk about them in just a little bit. We handle drafting, negotiating, and reviewing contracts to which the city is a party. We handle real estate transactional matters, land acquisitions and sales, annexations, vacations, condemnations, easements, and dedications of public right-of-way. We handle collections on behalf of the city, foreclosure and bankruptcy defense, personal property tax collection, and municipal forfeitures through orders to show cause in municipal court and trips, which is a trip, which is a mechanism by which we work with the finance department to intercept people's income tax refunds for payment of city forfeitures. We manage litigation at all levels in which the city may be involved in some manner. It could be in an administrative proceeding or at the Supreme Court level, the appellate court level, the circuit court level, or the municipal court level. We prosecute municipal code violations, which include all traffic matters, housing and fire code violations by drafting long-form summons and complaints in your inspection matters that you've heard spoken about this evening. We work closely with the inspections Department, prepare special inspection warrants and raise orders, raise or repair orders. We draft and interpret ordinances. And actually, we have, as one of our ordinances, we have to pass on the enforceability of ordinances before the council can adopt an ordinance or an ordinance change. I serve as the parliamentarian according to your council rules. I'm a member of the Board of Public Works by ordinance. I also advise the Board of Review every year that Rick spoke about. I am your representative to CivMCC, which is City and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, which is the mutual insurance company the city belongs to that is made up of 49 different cities. Nathan Miller of our office is the new ADA Coordinator with the departure of our past city clerk. We attend, staff, and advise all standing committee meetings. I regularly attend finance, economic development, HR, Parks and Rec on occasion. Tara Alfonso staffs public health and safety and CISM. And Nathan goes to airport, which is not a standing committee, but he, we regularly attend that, those meetings as well. And we're happy to attend any meetings as requested if we're shepherding a particular matter through, through a committee. We provide legal, formal legal opinions and informal opinions. We conduct trainings and we assist heavily with responses to open record requests and advise on open meeting requirements. I hope all of you received, should have been a file almost this thick when you were sworn in. So I didn't prepare any handouts for this evening or even a PowerPoint because I overloaded you, I'm sure, with information when you received that packet. But it summarized at the beginning what I provided to you. And as you work through that and read it, you'll understand a lot of what I'm talking about tonight, about the city attorney's office, our legal review policy, our webpage, our legal opinion request form, both hard copy and online, a copy of the most recent procurement policy, which I recommend you become familiar with, 20 basic parliamentary motions, some fundamentals about parliamentary procedure, and then a list of many, many resources. And tonight, much of what I'll be talking about will, under item two on the agenda, will highlight things taken from those resources and mainly from the Local Government Center and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. So we didn't share with you a couple articles, and I just want to share a couple quick things with you from this one that appeared in the municipality in October of 2012. 10 tips using your municipal attorney more effectively. And I'm just going to read three tips if I may. The first one says, remember you and the municipal attorney are on the same team. Your municipal attorney should not be viewed as an obstructionist. It is the municipal attorney's job to protect the municipality by identifying potential legal problems and assist them so that they exercise their powers in a lawful manner. If you have specific goals, clearly communicate those goals to the attorney. It may be that the goal itself is unlawful. In that case, it is better to know in advance in order to protect the municipality from liability. However, most often, the end goal is legitimate and there are a variety of ways to achieve the desired result. The means of achieving the goal are less important than reaching the desired result, but using the wrong means can have significant legal consequences. Number two, remember who the client is. Municipal officials should bear in mind that the municipal attorney's client is the municipality acting through its governing body and not you individual officers or any employees. Because the municipality is the client, it is often unclear who can speak or act on behalf of the municipality. And it can be helpful for both the attorney and the officials if the governing body develops clear guidelines regarding who can contact the attorney and under what circumstances it is appropriate to do so. Individual officers and employees must understand that they themselves are not the attorney's client and that the attorney may not be able to keep everything told to the attorney confidential. Moreover, officials and employees should not attempt or expect to persuade the attorney to act in a manner that is inconsistent with the attorney's obligation to its client, the municipality. And finally, number 10, remember that lawyers are legal advisors, not policymakers. The municipal attorney is a legal advisor and it's the attorney's job to help the municipality see what the options are and what the benefits and disadvantages might be of proceeding in a given way. The attorney should not be pulled into politics and should be allowed to maintain independence and objectivity so that the attorney could give the correct legal answer rather than the desired legal answer. Once the legislative body has decided which way they wish to proceed, the attorney can then implement their plan and make sure the municipality carries out its powers lawfully. So I too would invite you to visit our office. It's pretty boring. I mean, there's a lot of books there and dusty books and so forth, but you're more than welcome. I've got an appointment with Sarah tomorrow. If you have any questions, just call me. I can provide you any information. If I don't have it or I can't find it, I'll track it down for you and get it to you. I will tell you when I'm keeping what you're telling me confidential and when I'm not. And I will try to also inform you when I send emails out whether or not the information I'm providing you is confidential or it's not. Sometimes memos containing strategy are confidential, but most things are open records. So your, your emails, for instance, are open records that leave and come into your city email address and so forth. So I think I'll stop there. And if people want to take a break before you call for the next item, that's fine with me, Becky, but I'll finish my, finish there with any questions you have about the city attorney's office or the function of our office.
Nothing.
Okay.
Okay. What would people like? The next session is just the legal obligations is specifics. You want to just try through?
Or leave?
It sounds like we'll just go on, Ann, and get this. Yeah, thanks.
And I see it is 20 to 8. I'll try, I'll try to keep it to like 15 minutes. I'll just hit the highlights. So I'm taking this from, there's FAQs on the League of Wisconsin Municipalities pages that are real fun and real easy to read, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. First of all, what is the purpose of a cow or a committee of the whole? And why is a committee of the whole used? The committee is used to allow a more free-ranging discussion than allowed under the rules of the governing body. When it's used, the body refers new matters to the committee and sitting as a committee of the whole, then the governing body can meet to consider these matters at a regularly designated time and place sufficiently in advance of the time of the regular council meeting. The public may be heard, advice of boards and commissions may be sought, and advice of employees and other officers may be secured. Matters referred to the committee of the whole may be debated pursuant to its rules and a recommendation made to the governing body. So we don't use them on a regular basis, but they certainly do have a purpose. And this is one good reason we use committees of the whole. Further trainings or retreats will be called as committee meetings of the whole. And when we have a topic that's of really hot interest, we may bring it to this body to discuss and vet first because you are the membership of the council, but in this setting, you're acting in a, in a committee setting. I'm going to talk first briefly about open meetings law and then just a little bit on public records. So I think it's really important to start this discussion by reminding you, as every court decision would, that Section 19.8111 says, "In recognition of the fact that a representative government of the American type is dependent upon an informed electorate, it is declared to be the policy of this state that the public is entitled to the fullest and most complete information regarding the affairs of government as is compatible with the conduct of governmental business." These laws are to be liberally construed to promote open government, and that's how courts will interpret them. And so you've heard that before, sunshine laws, open government. You hear that talked about when we want to go into closed session, and I'm not going to touch on that topic this evening. But it's really important to start with the thought that everything should be conducted as openly as possible so that the public can view the conduct of the government's business. It enables the public to have the fullest and most complete information regarding the affairs of government. And like I said, they'll be liberally construed. So what is a meeting? A meeting is a gathering of members of a body for the purpose of exercising its responsibilities. And a meeting, under the definition of the law, occurs when both the purpose test and the numbers test are met. And those were developed under a case called the showers case, or the showers test it's called. So there's two tests under, that came out from that case. The numbers test is defined as enough members of a body present to determine the outcome of an action. And the purpose test is discussion, information gathering, or decision-making on a matter within jurisdiction of the body. So by statute, if one half of the members of any body are present, there's a presumption that a meeting has occurred under the open meeting law unless it can be proven that the purpose test has not been met. So with your standing committees that have five members on them, if any three of any standing committee are together anywhere, it's presumed that a meeting is occurring. And that's why you'll often see going forward that when you're in social gatherings or we take a tour of a plant, or we meet on the 400 block, or wherever you meet, even if it's for a social gathering, if it's planned and it's not a chance meeting, you will see it agendized as a potential quorum because it's possible, you're presumed to be having a meeting and it's possible that you may be exchanging information or discussing business. A lesser number of members may meet the numbers test if they can affect the outcome. And by that I mean, they can affect the outcome either negatively or positively. So they could affect it affirmatively to pass an action, or if there are enough people that agree not to pass an action, they can affect the action negatively, which is referred to as a negative... to as a negative quorum. So you must be aware of that numbers requirement. So members must convene for there to be a meeting. A meeting isn't just limited to face-to-face gatherings, so that can occur over any type of social media. Meetings can include situations where members are able to effectively communicate with one another. With written paper correspondence, circulation of a paper or a hard copy memorandum among the members of a body could be determined to be a meeting. Exchanges and responses, if any, are usually spread over a considerable period of time with little or no conversation. That situation would not generally constitute a convening of the membership, or a one-way flow of information would not constitute a meeting of the members or a convening of the members. So typically with email, you'll see someone sends something out to everybody on the council, and if you all start hitting reply all, and now we're having a discussion by email, that's prohibited by the open meeting law. And so you'll see if I send something out and I'm surveying, you all say, just respond, reply to me directly, and I'll collect the responses or whatever, and you'll see that from other people, too. But it's so easy to fall into that trap when you're sitting at home at your computer and you just start emailing people. That applies also to telephone conference calls, video conferences. While they're not face-to-face, consider it the same thing as a face-to-face in-person conversations, conversation, because participants are able to effectively communicate and exercise authority vested in the body. So remember, there's a convening of the members, no matter what the situation is, if it meets the purpose and the numbers test. So it could be potentially three people, and if they are meeting for the purpose of discussing business, it's always going to be a unique fact-by-fact, you know, case-by-case determination by the court whether or not they violated the law, but that's the best advice that I can give you. So communicating through blogging, email, instant messaging, or any other social media platform, like I said, constitutes a convening of the members if you meet the numbers and purpose test. Presently, there are no court decisions on this issue, so consider whether your electronic communications imitate in-person discussions. And by that I mean, the court will look at the rapid back-and-forth exchange of viewpoints, how many members were involved in the discussion, how close together the communications occurred, the frequency, the length of the communications, the number, the number and identity of the participants, and the extent of the conversation-like interactions that are contained in those messages. So again, forward and reply all deprive a sender of control over the number and identity of recipients with access to that message. So please be very careful about that. Reduce the risk of inadvertent open meetings, legal violations, in your electronic communications, like I said, by using them to transmit information one way. Incorporating the reply only to one person and not reply all. If you're a recipient, be conscious of and refrain from forwarding messages around then to other members of the body, and be conscious of replies to and refrain from replies to groups of recipients that include members of this body or any of the standing committees. I think I'm going to skip, in the interest of time overlapping in multiple meetings, sometimes that happens when we have a number of people, like a lot of times, a lot of the council will end up showing up to all the finance committee meetings, and you'll have various quorums of other bodies attending other bodies' meetings just to gather information or to observe or whatever the reason is. So two separate meetings occur, but public notice has to be given for any potential quorum that's occurring. A single notice can be used, but it must clearly indicate that it's either a joint meeting, and we've held joint meetings of standing committees. Must give the name of each body involved and properly publish the notice. So a court can void, here's the downside to committing an open meeting violation. A court can void the decision made at an illegal meeting if the public interest in enforcing the law outweighs the public interest in sustaining the decision. And a member can be fined, it's technically not a fine, it's a civil forfeiture, but you can be fined up to between $25 and $300 per violation, and that's non-reimbursable by the city. Attorney's fees may or may not be reimbursable, but you're also facing a loss of public trust and potentially personal embarrassment. So if you have any questions at all about anything you see going on, or you're considering engaging in some activity and you want to make sure it's okay, just contact me ahead of time. I'll give you a quick advisory opinion. I put a fact sheet in your folder also on electronic meetings. I think that's worthy of reading, but I'm not going to go over that tonight. It goes through a lot of the things we've already experienced with remote meetings, not being able to see everything going on in the room, not being able to assess the credibility or the body language or the facial expressions of the people that you're interacting with, not being able to see handouts or share presentations. They don't recommend, the DOJ does not recommend, remote meetings for public hearings, for public input, and when you're using complex charts, graphs, PowerPoints, because it's very difficult to transmit those. Just a brief word on public participation in local government body meetings. The Wisconsin Open Meetings Law doesn't require public comment, but it does allow a body to provide for a period of public comment during their meeting, but it has to be noticed. And we do place that on our council agendas, Leslie does, it says "public comment." We do that at both the beginning of the meeting for items that appear on the agenda as well as anything they'd like to discuss because we felt that that was more constitutional. We had some issues with that. Likewise, at the conclusion of the meeting, people can appear to give public comment on any item that they wish. So there's two opportunities at every council meeting. Right now, at your committee meetings, that's been rather inconsistent across the board as to which committees allow it and which don't, and how lenient they are. At the council, according to your rules, it's three minutes, limited to each citizen to make comment, but again, that's really up to the chairs now of your standing committees. All of these things right on the chair. It's up to you to know how to, you will bear the burden for any open meeting law violation because you are, whether a staff member is helping you put together the agenda items or the packet, the chair is signing the agenda, and they are responsible for the sufficiency of those agenda items and the notice. Everything else that goes with it, the chair is going to be responsible for. So it's really up to them whether they want to recognize people during their committee meetings to interrupt the meeting or ask questions. Totally up to the chair. I would recommend, though, that you not engage in debate with private citizens, hear their comments, allow public participation, but I advise that you not start trying to answer their questions or conduct a town hall session because it's going to interrupt your business of your meetings. It makes it a little difficult.
I just have one question.
Yes, go right ahead.
So when you have public comment, is it even more so just not allowed to have that interaction? Like parliamentary procedure kind of prohibits some of that interaction when you have a public comment, especially something that's maybe not on the agenda?
Well, that's the danger, because they make a comment, and then you want to be helpful, and so you start trying to answer their question, and then somebody else turns their light on and they want to start talking about it, and now they're debating it, and it's not agendized. The public would not have known that you were going to engage in that discussion, and who knows where it goes if it keeps going? That's a potential violation of the open meeting law.
Thank you.
So it's not that you can't talk to that citizen after the meeting and answer their questions or whatever, but it's not a good idea to get engaged during a meeting. What action can a governmental body take against a member who discloses confidential information obtained during a closed session? This is a common question I get with every new council. If a member discloses confidential information obtained during a closed session, it is not a violation of the open meetings law. However, such behavior is understandably a matter of concern for bodies, and bodies can prohibit and establish consequences for such behavior. So the statutes allow the council to conduct its own business and its own governance by its council rules. Thus, the creation of the Rules Review Committee as a living document so that you can all regularly review those and propose amendments to them. We have surveyed many communities in the process of looking at these over the years. Some fine people for missing meetings. Some cities do all kinds of things and impose all kinds of penalties for committing various violations of their rules. I think our rules are very fair at this time. Some municipalities actually have ordinances which prohibit disclosure of confidential information. Then such penalties might include a forfeiture. Otherwise, public censure is really the only remedy available if somebody violates that. Where such behavior is clearly prohibited, other potential consequences, such as criminal prosecution for misconduct in public office may be warranted. Can a member of a governmental body, as a member of the public, bring up items not specifically designated on the agenda under the period-noticed public comment under the open meeting law? No. And I had that question come up, and I'm not sure I answered it that way this past week. But Section 19.84-2 provides a limited exception to the general notice requirements of the open meetings law, which allows members of the public to bring up items not specifically on the agenda during a period of noticed public comment. It is intended to allow local governments to be responsive to their constituents and allow the body to receive information from members of the public. However, it was not intended to allow members of the governing body to bring up items for discussion outside of those items that were placed on the agenda and noticed to the public. So given that bodies have regular access and ready access to these agendas used by members of that exception to discuss unnoticed matters will be seen as an impermissible attempt to circumvent the open meeting law. Does the public have a right to speak at a meeting of a governmental body? No. Although Wisconsin's law requires that the public be allowed to attend an open meeting, the public actually has no right to address a governmental body unless there's a public hearing that's specifically required by state statute. But it's not uncommon, as we've talked about earlier, to notice periods of public comment, and we do do that. Another question I often get is, who controls the agenda of a governing body meeting such as the council agenda? And there's no black and white answer to that because agendas are not required by state law, but by customer rule, we use those because it's an easy way to notice what we're going to talk about to comply with the open meetings requirements. State law does not specifically vest agenda control in city councils. This meeting rule authority includes the power to develop and enact agenda rules, however, and mayors are also not vested with any agenda control power. So we may run into a few situations along the road. I don't know where we're debating what can go on or off. I would, I'm probably going to end up advising or recommending that if the body, the majority of the body wants an item on the agenda, it will be placed on the agenda.
Yes, Mayor.
I do have a question. We could, in fact, have a council rule that maybe would govern our agendas and that could maybe clarify if we felt like it.
Absolutely.
Just throwing it out there.
Yep, that could be an idea to give to the Rules Review Committee. There's a new open meetings law that became effective March 4th about public notice. I'm sure Leslie's probably aware of that. I just wanted to make you aware that I know about it, too. Notice of meetings can be provided in one of three ways, either by posting a notice in at least three public places, posting in one public place and placing it electronically on the city's website, or by paid publication in a print news medium. And we'll be following that with all of our Board of Review notices. Briefly, on the Wisconsin records law, that's at 19.31. The open meetings law is at 19.85 in the statutes. You need to be aware that there's a definition in the statute of what a record is and what a record isn't. Very typically, like I said, any of your communications about government business, whether they're on a private device or a city-owned device, or using a city email account or a private Facebook account, may very well be subject to disclosure, depending on the nature of the communication. And that's what makes responding to open record requests so complicated because you have to first gather what you believe are records responsive to the request, and then go through them to see if there are any specifically exempted reasons for nondisclosure, like personally identifying information, or law enforcement records, or personnel records, or HIPAA-protected information, things of those nature, of that nature. So the important thing for you to know is that a record includes anything written, drawn, printed, spoken, visual, electromagnetic, or electronically generated or stored data. Includes handwritten, typed, printed pages, maps, charts, photographs, films, recordings, tapes, discs, and any other medium upon which electronically stored data is recorded. Very broad description. A website maintained by a public official about government business is also a public record, and access cannot be restricted to it. Records also include emails and other correspondence sent to an elective official. So if you are using your city-assigned email addresses, know that our IT department is backing those up every night, and they will keep them for seven years. Whether you press delete or not, we can find them, and we will find them when we conduct a search with IT at the requester's expense to locate your emails in response to an open record request. You are an elected official, so you are an authority. You do meet that definition. You are charged with managing and maintaining your records. If they are not on the city server, you cannot destroy them. Once an open record request is made, that's criminal if you destroy records or tamper with them. Tampering with them anytime, but destroying them when an open record request has been made. So you have to keep those for seven years and find a way to back them up. Toni mentioned that she's the social media coordinator. We do have a vendor that we hired recently, too, also to back up our city Facebook pages and things of that nature. Each of you are the legal custodians of your own records. The chairpersons of the committees are the legal custodians of the committee's records. And just be really careful what you write. When you're sitting at your computer, my mother always taught me, don't do anything you don't want to see described in the headlines of the newspaper tomorrow. And that's the advice I give all of you when you're sitting in your pajamas at your computer at home at 2:00 in the morning and you're emailing another council member or whatever. Just think about, well, do I care if this ends up on a newspaper headline, or will I be embarrassed if this shows up there and that? That should be a good guide for you to help you think about that as you're communicating on various social media platforms and through email. So with that, I will finish. Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to reiterate that we have had, and I think Ann can tell you, we have had requests on social media, social media messages, IMs, instant messages. We have had open record requests for members of this body. So it happens. It happens.
And private Facebook pages.
Yeah, these are private Facebook pages, and you're instant messaging another member or whatever, or they think you are. There have been, and it has been recent. And so I just want to let everybody know, this isn't something that could happen. It has happened.
Actually, I had it in here, and I skipped through a bunch of things, but the City of Madison actually has an ordinance that prohibits you from instant messaging during meetings and imposes a big fine or a penalty for being caught doing that. Because again, you're doing that outside of the eyes of the public, who should be able to see you conducting your business, and so you can't be having discussions. And various cities have had real issues with that, with the advent of all this technology of members emailing each other, texting, instant messaging, and that can definitely also be a problem. So are there any?
We have two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
We, we'll go with Lisa first and then Pat.
Okay. Thanks, Becky. One thing I want Ann to talk about specifically, and I ask her to talk about this every time we have one of these, is I would like her to talk specifically about walking forums and what they are and why they're wrong. And I ask that because in 2008, when I was first elected, there was a very obvious walking forum mechanism that was in play on that particular council. And what we had happening at the time was we had a private citizen, and that private citizen was not elected, but that citizen would engage in multiple meetings, either as a group or individually, with a number of council members, with the specific intent of reviewing either committee or council agendas and then influencing the decisions of those members. And then when those members would report to the council meeting, their minds were made up, and items would either pass or fail as a result of that maneuver. And that was, it was a source of continuous division in that 2008 council, and I created a couple of very obvious voting blocks, which was also a dysfunctional part of our local government then. And, you know, I know that out in the community, there are citizens who would still do those things. things, and I want us to be on the lookout for that. So, you know, I want Ann to be clear with us about what a walking quorum is. Rhinelander got themselves in trouble with that last year, communicating amongst themselves and strategizing behind the backs of the other members, and we just, we can't do it. So Ann, could you talk about that?
Yeah, and I think I covered that a little bit when I talked about what is a meeting. And clearly, with five new members, nobody expects that you're not going to ask questions and talk to your colleagues about a matter or an issue, you know, what do you know about this issue? Nobody's telling you that you can't do that. But you don't want to get, start enough side discussions, enough to influence a vote, that involve a quorum of any body that could affect affirmatively or negatively, because you're going to create a block and block passage of a measure, because they can't get enough votes to reach a majority. So by any communication in hard copy, or by phone, or by email, or however, you could get yourself into trouble potentially by creating a walking quorum of people through a series of communications, whether or not they're face-to-face.
And whether or not they're in a group setting or one at a time?
Right, yes. So a series of, a series of communications, like I said, they're, a court would look at the length of it, the frequency, the duration, the number of participants, they're going to look at all the communications. So really hard to know you're getting involved in one at first, and hard for the court maybe to divine intent at the end, but the records are going to speak for themselves whether or not you've created one and really conducted the business of the people outside of their ability to observe you, that's the violation.
The only thing I would offer is that back in 2008, when we were living through that, the citizen in question believed that he was saving the city from itself. And so creating that block and manipulating the opinions of those members, I think that his intentions were good, but his mechanisms were really subversive. And, you know, that really was, as a new member, that was something pretty mortifying for me to walk into, because at that time, we had 12 members, and I felt really caught in the middle. And, you know, I would have members on both sides calling me up and asking me which way I was going to go on issue A or issue B, because they wanted to know if they had the seven votes, or if the other side did. And that really put me in an awkward position, and after about two weeks of their phone calls, I had to finally stand up and say, "Just stop." Because I wasn't going to tell anybody what I thought, or how I was going to vote before the committee meeting or before the council meeting, and they didn't know until we got there and the votes came in, whether I was with them or not. And finally, they stopped calling me. But it was really a source of, I guess I would say, stress and frustration for me as a new member, and I would hate for our new members to get stuck in that, because sometimes people will make those overtures under the guise that they're helping and training you, but don't buy it.
Well, and if that goes on, it may become apparent at some point, if it appears as though your meetings are mere formalities, and you're not discussing or fully developing or discussing items on the agenda, it may then appear that it's all been decided behind the scenes, and you're merely, it literally is a mere formality to introduce an item, make a motion, and vote on it with no discussion. Then you're going to have the public start to question what's going on. So, good. Any other questions?
Pat?
That's what happened to us, we had an awful lot of 7s and 5s. And it was really obvious to us and the media. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Lisa. Pat, we didn't hear you, hang on. Can you unmute yourself?
I'm unmuted.
There you go. Okay, we can hear you now, go ahead.
Very good. Just like Ann to talk a little bit about how we should kind of think about, think before we ask the city attorney's office for an opinion on something that we're curious about.
Thank you.
And I, I will tell a story on myself, that I asked a question, I think it was in my first year in office, and I thought it would be something that the city attorney's office would have a quick grasp of, be able to, I don't know if she remembers this, but I thought, this, you know, shouldn't be this hard to figure this out. And it ended up, I believe it took at least six hours of somebody's time, and it was, it earned me an admonition from the mayor's office, I believe, and other sources. Anyway, so now when I ask a question, I think about, you know, whether I'm just, you know, I'll make sure that it's not something I'm just curious about. And I recently asked, I was wanting to know something, and I let Ann know that if this was going to be something that would require more than five minutes of research, she should tell me, and I would withdraw the request. But I would say, if it's something really serious, and you know that it's going to incur a lot of time and research, the part of the city attorney's office, maybe go in concert with the mayor's office, or maybe go to the mayor and say, "Mayor, if you feel that this question is worthy of a significant amount of city attorney time, can we get an answer to this?" Or something. But I stumbled into something I had no idea, as a layman, I would take that long, and I live to regret it.
Well, thank you, Pat. You're very polite, and sensitive, and conscientious, and I don't recall the topic. So some people engage our office more frequently than other council members, some I will not hear from their entire term, and others will email me every other day. And that's fine, that we're here to serve you, you're our client. But do understand, we don't manufacture this stuff in five minutes or overnight, depending on the question. And you may not know how long it takes, but we have to be very careful and thorough in our analysis, make sure we've gathered all the facts upon which we are going to apply the law, and then have a discussion, develop the legal analysis, and come up with a conclusion for you. We want to make sure we're right, because we're going on record, you're relying on us. And if you rely on us and we're wrong, you're going to be protected by the city. But it's an embarrassment, and would be an embarrassment for our office. So we want to take pride in our work. We don't want to drag things out unnecessarily, or take a lot of time, but it's really ill-advised to act hastily on a lot of things, especially if you feel it's important enough to ask us, you should probably be suspect if we answer it in five minutes or less, unless it's a real easy question, like, "Do we have an ordinance on this?" Yes. Which I'll make a shout-out also, we are now converting to MuniCode, and our online publishing of our ordinances, and it's much more searchable now, much friendlier for people to search and find online, so I think you'll find that good. So thank you for that, Pat, but I encourage you to keep writing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, that's the end of our day.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I do need, I do need a motion to adjourn, though, we have to adjourn.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Pat. Do I have a second?
I'll do that.
Second by Larson, all, oh, we have to do roll call, Ann? We don't? Okay. Do we, Ann, we just said that. Do we, because we just had that.
Here's your next note of parliamentary procedure, you don't need a motion and a second to adjourn a meeting, you can declare it adjourned.
Oh, we can? Okay. We never do.
I know. But you can.
Okay, it is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.